Board of Supervisors, November 10th work session here. So, thank you for attending today. For the record, Supervisor Kavanaugh is not in attendance. First item on here is a presentation from Kim Vandenberg, our good folks over at HOHP. So, you're up first, Kim.
Thank you.
Good morning Chairman Miller and County Supervisors. I'd like to say thank you for allowing the opportunity for HOHP to present to you today.
State your name.
Oh, Kim Vandenberg from HOHP, which stands for Honoring Hiring Helping Our Heroes of Pinellas County. So, today we wanted to walk through the beginning of HOHP, where we've been and where we're going. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce Udo Cook, who is the co-chair for HOHP, and also Mr. Jim Sylvester, who is a board member. He is also a United States Air Force veteran and also an Arizona Veterans Hall of Famer from Pinellas County. Okay, so, four, I do want to say one more thing. Happy anniversary to Pinellas County and HOHP for 10 years of partnership that you will see as I go through this presentation. In 2011, I was on the workforce board. Udo and I were on the workforce board along with Adeline. It was Arizona Workforce Connection at that time, and we had opened the center over on Florence Boulevard in Treckland-Castagrand, the Pinellas County Workforce Office. And we were wondering about what are some of the things that we could do to help veterans in Pinellas County? And at that time, we decided we were going to dedicate a wall in that center for veterans, and they would have their own area where they could go in, sit down, work on their resume, and also have information provided to them. We got the wall prepared. We had the Jero TC come in and post colors, and we had David Snyder and Brian Martin, who were supervisors at that time, and we had a grand opening for that area. And we also selected Corrections Corporation of America at that time to be an honored employer for honoring and hiring veterans in our area. So, as you can see on Slide 2, it's got pictures of the wall, and then it's got pictures of the people that attended. So, that's actually when the idea of helping veterans and doing more for veterans started. HOHP wasn't in our minds at that time, but it started in the Pinellas County Workforce Connection office with three board members from the Arizona Workforce Connection. In 2012, we had Adeline Allen and Udo Cook, myself, Palmer Miller, Sanetta Cherry from Pinellas Hispanic Council, Olga Delsi from Simpatico, Brad Hazel from the VFW, and Jim Sylvester. We formed a committee and started meeting and talking about things that we could do to improve services to veterans across the county, not just employment, but in other areas that we would be able to assist them. So, we started talking about how do we do things that other counties are doing? And you had Maricopa County and Pima County doing a lot of things for their veterans because they have more resources out there. So, my boss, Peggy Finan at that time, she challenged us as a committee to have the first Pinellas County Veterans Stand Down. And that stand down happened out at the Pinellas County Fairgrounds. The first two actually did. And at that point, we had 125 veterans that showed up for our first stand down. We had many services out there. The VA brought their mobile unit out there, and we had an excellent, excellent stand down. After we finished the stand down, we're like, okay, we did this. What else can we do? What other things can we do to help our veterans? So, we started to form our nonprofit board so that we could draw funds and apply for grants to help our veterans. And I think the main reason that it hit us really hard at that stand down is we had a veteran there who was a homeless veteran, and his face was swollen out to here from an abscess tooth. And the only way he was going to get any help from the VA was he had to go to Tucson. He had to leave the county to go to Tucson to get services. At that time, we had no funds to provide emergency services. That was his only option to get treatment, and that stuck in our minds. No veteran should have to leave their county to get help. So, that's stuck in our minds, and we continued to move forward. In 2014, we were approved for our nonprofit from the IRS, 501(c)(3), and we were lucky enough to be at the Pinellas County Town Hall that year. And in speaking with the director from the Department of Health, he was also an Air Force veteran, and he said, so what are you guys, what would you guys like to do? What are your plans? And one of the biggest things that we wanted was to have a mobile veterans' center. At that time, the Department of Health had a mobile unit that was sitting at the parking lot that hadn't been used, and things moved into place, and Eagle One was born. So, in December of 2014, the Board of Supervisors voted to sell Eagle One to HOHP. And we had to raise $10,000 to wrap him because you could not get a veteran to walk into this Department of Health. We went to several events, and they're looking at it, and all it said was Pinellas County Health Department. And the veterans were looking at it, and they were like, well, I don't know what that's about. So, they wouldn't come in. So, we raised the $10,000, and we received donations from the American Legion, the VFW, Elks Lodge, Simpatico, and Bob Sousa to put the wrap that you see on the next slide there. In 2015, we unveiled Eagle One. Nobody got to see Eagle One except for the board members until that day in September, and it was driven all the way from Castagrand escorted by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department and through Eloy at Coolidge over here to Florence. And we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony to show the new Pinellas County Eagle One Mobile Veterans Center that was going to hit the road soon. Did we have any money? No, we did not have any money. But we went and applied for a grant with Gila River, and Gila River provided the grant that provides the fuel, the maintenance, and everything that is needed to keep Eagle One on the road. Stand down continued each year. And then in 2016, Arizona at Work moved to Florence Street, and there was extra space. And we talked with Greg Stanley, who is also a veteran. And there was a corner of that building that we would hope that we would be able to maybe open up a veterans' center. It became the HOHP Pinellas County Veterans Center Eagles Landing. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We had a lot of construction that had to be done because it was like a shell. We got grants from Home Depot, and then we had a lot of donations from other people to build it out the way it looks now. And if you haven't been there, I issue an invitation to you to come down and see the center. The veterans call it the USO. We've had Senator Sinema has been there. Senator Kelly has been there, and the congressman has also been there and toured it, and they call it the USO. Some of them call it the Palace of Pinellas County. All of the work that went into completing the inside of our building was done by volunteers. Everything has been done by volunteers from the time that we started. You can see pictures of the walls coming up. We had a construction company that came in and helped us build the walls, put all of the sheet rock up, and Eagles Landing was born. And in that, there are one in the bottom middle that became a pantry, which has food items, clothing, hygiene, blankets, pillows, whatever veterans may need, we're able to provide it out of that center. We had our grand opening in January of 2017, and it was very well-attended by the supervisors, the sheriff, county attorney, and our board members. And it was, you know, Chairman Miller, you didn't put a bet out on when I would cry. I missed that. It started with a dream, and we got that dream of having that center. And the center opened, and we never expected the turnout that we got. If you look at Page 3, well, it's my Page 3, in the other packet that was given to you, Page 3 shows the traffic that has gone through the facility over the last few years since we opened. 18,041 have passed through our doors with 15,345 of them being veterans. And it breaks out each of the cities that the veterans have come from to get services out of our building, and it looks like this. They have that right? It shows the traffic from each of the cities. So, we truly have been a Pinellas County Veterans Center. The numbers were amazing, and if COVID hadn't happened, we probably would have hit 7,000 visitors in 2020. But COVID kind of set us back. But if you look at the next slide, it does show you the numbers for each year. Over 3,000 in 2017, 4,000 in 2018, 5,000 in 2019, and then because of COVID, it dropped. What we have at the center, we have Arizona Department of Veterans Services with three Veteran Benefits Counselors who do service-connected claims. We have a Veterans Cup of Joe Coffee Club every Tuesday, where we see maybe 30-plus veterans that come in every Tuesday to sit and talk with each other as support to each other. We have a peer support group on Thursdays at 8:00 a.m., Veterans Only AA Group Thursdays at 4:00 p.m. We established an Honor Guard team over two years ago, almost three years ago, that have gone out and pinned veterans that are in hospice, and they've traveled to different parts of the county to provide pinings, pin the veterans to let them know how much they were appreciated for their service to our country. We have Veterans Helping Veterans Team. We just recently formed the HOHP Eagle Shadow Riders, the Food Pantry Emergency Services, and one of our biggest and most proudest pieces that we do is Veterans Court. We have been with Veterans Court since it started. We have been an important part of supporting the veterans that are going through court. And I can say that we are the only veterans' organization that has been on the phone, that has been in court, that answers the call when the probation officer calls and says, Kim, I need a room for this veteran, or I need clothes or food for this veteran while he's going through his probation. We've always been there for them. I'd like to also ask you to look at the HOHP activities that come out of that center. The center's open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday from 9:00 to 3:00. We have Eagle One, who's been grounded for two years. He's ready to get out of his nest and go out, though. He's ready to roll. We go out, we're hoping in January, we're going to have him on the road, and he'll be out to each city and town across Pinellas County each quarter. And you'll see those numbers a little bit later in the presentation. We have the Transition Center, which Udo's going to talk to you guys about in a little bit. The Veterans Court. And I did forget to tell you, last month, we took the Veterans Court gentlemen down to Tombstone on a field trip, and we visited Audie Murphy's museum with the Gold Medal of Honor winners, and all of us were able to hold an M1 that was owned by Audie Murphy that he paid $17 for when he came out of the service. So, it was an honor for us to be able to hold something that belonged to an honorable man. We have a breakfast potluck the first Tuesday of every month. We have an Iraq-Afghanistan veteran that does a patriot's journey every Monday, second and fourth Monday of the month. We have a peer support group, AA Eagle Shadow Riders. And recently, we also started a Pinellas County Honor Guard, where we're trying to connect all of the veteran organizations together so that we have an Honor Guard so when a veteran passes away, we're able to ensure that that veteran has the honors rendered to him that he deserves. We're going to start a Guitars for Vets, which is a new chapter. It's a new project across the United States, and we're pretty close to being able to get our charter started. Guitars for Vets is a way for veterans that are suffering from PTSD to work through their PTSD through music. So, who knows? Maybe next year, we can bring them in here, and they can play some tunes for you. It's only, you know, they're not going to be super great, but we're going to be working on that. On Saturday, we'll have our ninth Pinellas County Veterans Stand Down. We start at 7:00 a.m., and we'll end at 1:00. We're expecting about 300 veterans to come through for services, and that's always been the normal, except for last year, we had 125 due to COVID restrictions. We participate with the Castagrand and Coolidge Florence Memorial Day Committee, and we're also the lead agency for the Castagrand Veterans Day Parade. Our next slide, it talks about how this center has been the hub for Pinellas County for Veterans Services. Eagle One comes out of there. The Honor Guard comes out of there. Services for the Veterans Court and services for all of our veterans come out of that hub and try to serve our veterans across Pinellas County. And even last year with COVID, we closed down for a couple of months, and then we decided, no, we have to be there for our veterans. So, we opened it up for the PTSD group, and we opened it up for the AA group. And I was there every day during the week doing intakes over the phone, handing out food boxes on Tuesday and Thursday, just to make sure that our veterans were continuing to be served. Next slide, Eagle One. So, here's your numbers for Eagle One. 2016, 805 visitors, 724 for 2017, 567. 2018, 422. 2019, and then because of COVID, we had to ground him for a while. But Eagle One has been out in all of your districts, serving and providing information to veterans. A lot of veterans don't go, especially over in our Mammoth Kearney area. They stay there. They don't know where to go. They don't have a lot of information. But with Eagle One out there, we've been able to help them get connected to services that they need and be able to provide some of them out of Eagle One. And I think, before I turn this over to Udo, I think this Veterans Center is vital to the veterans in our county. I believe in my heart that we have provided hope, guidance, direction, peace, and camaraderie to these veterans who deserve everything that they deserve for serving our country. I am the mother of a veteran, the daughter of a veteran, the sister, cousin. My granddaughter is currently a tech sergeant in the United States Air Force, serving in Alaska, and my other granddaughter will be leaving for boot camp in January. So, my family, sorry, has served this country, and I'm very proud of that. And I want to make sure that our veterans get everything that they deserve. So, at that, before I start bawling, I'm going to turn this over to Udo Cook, who's going to tell you about the Pinellas County Veterans Transition Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
My name is Udo Cook. I am the co-chair of HOHP and one of the founding members. And I honestly have to tell you, if you would have asked me 11 years ago, what are you going to accomplish? I could never have dreamed in my wildest that we could do this much with so little. One of the things that we've done, and she touched on it a little bit, but after our first stand down, we created emergency funding money. We have housed hundreds of people for anywhere from a few days to weeks in hotels while we're trying to work on their transition into temporary housing with other partner agencies, which gets a homeless person off the street or out of a car into a hotel. But it's kind of backwards because we're not fixing the problem for those individuals. In other words, if somebody is homeless, there's a reason they're homeless. It could be drug, it could be alcohol, it could be PTSD, they just don't have family. There's a lot of things. So, this Transition Center was another phase in our pipeline that we're thinking of. We can bring them in. There's no rush because when you're renting a hotel, you only have so much money and so much time. So, with the Transition Center, it allows us to bring them in, fix their problems, or help them get back onto a stable ground where they can transition into a civilian life, have their own home, or maybe even reconnect with family. Could be a lot of things. And I have to tell you also, I'm very proud of our probation officers that have given many hours of their time helping us. Anytime I need people out there to help to clean up property, our vet court folks, our probation, there's community service, I get them. And you can't do all of the stuff that we're doing without volunteers and those type of supports. So, again, I thank those folks. So, if you go to this next slide, we're going to go through it kind of quick because I don't have much time. But in 2018, we created a transition team. In other words, we looked at what do we want and where can we go? And Kim found a property on McCartney Road, very old building, but wasn't being used. And Horizon Health was looking to get rid of it. It sat vacant for about three to four years, and I think they wanted $100,000. They wanted $100,000 to take over the building. And we're like, okay, we'll work on that, but we don't have $100,000. So, that's where Kristin Sinema's came in quite handily. She had come down to the center downtown, had done a video while she was doing her reelection, had a lot of our veterans in her video, saw what we were trying to do, saw the building, and then she started making phone calls to Horizon. And it's amazing what things did, what happened, because all of a sudden, we get a phone call from Horizon's top brass saying, we need to see you guys on Friday, whatever day it was. So, Kim and I drove up, met with their CEO, CFO, their superintendent of buildings, and we sat down, and it's amazing. When she looked at me, their CEO says, what's your operating budget? I looked at Kim, and I said, zero. How many employees you have? Zero. She goes, how are you doing all these things? I said, it's veterans playing it forward. It's people like myself and Kim that feel the need to push this forward. And I said, but I got to be honest with you, $100,000. If I give you $100,000, I'm going to need $200,000 or $300,000 to renovate. She said, well, what happens if we gift it to you? And Kim, I don't think heard it because she's like, what did she say? I said, they're going to give it to us. Only stipulation is you can't tell anybody until she runs it through the board, which was a little tough for Kim. It was very, very tough, actually, all the way home. So, we had an emergency board meeting at 5:00 o'clock that day and shared it with our board. It's been a great thing. We did a signing ceremony with Kristin Sinema and Horizon. We probably had 100 people attend the signing. It was just awesome. But then after we got it, it was like, okay, you know, we wrote a grant. We started working on the outside building. We wrote a grant to Home Depot. We got almost $5,000, started renovating that building. We found that the back of the building was kind of, all the plates were wet, water damaged. So, we ended up jacking up the back of the building, which wasn't my original price, but we still did it. We raised the building, replaced all the wood, did the siding, so added garage doors, added windows. We did all of that, all with volunteers, people that were in the construction business that have semi-retired or retired. And so, everything that we've done has been by volunteers. So, when we didn't get the grant for the renovations, because I had a contractor come out, give us the price. It was going to be $340,000 or $350,000, but he broke it down by areas. So, Kim had an idea, she said, well, you know, how much does a room cost? And I said, I have no idea. We went ahead and started, I measured every room of that building, drew a blueprint, figured out how much flooring it would take to do one room, how much paint it would take to do that room, what type of lighting, windows, all of that. And then we started selling sponsorships, and we sold all of the rooms to either veteran service organizations or community folks that wanted to be a part of it. So, that's kind of how we're going. If you go to the next slide, after that, we did our first flag raising, and I have to tell you, for having the first flag raising out at the center when it was just dirt, I mean, we had cleaned up all the vegetation that was overgrown and all that, we probably had almost 200-some people that attended, and a lot of people I didn't even know because they just wanted to see what this was going to be. So, that started that, I want to sponsor, I want to help, I have a brother that was a veteran, or I have a sister, or my parents served. So, that's kind of how that all started. Go to the next slide. So, the work began. I mean, literally, the work began. We had volunteers come from anywhere, from Arizona City, Santan, Maricopa, Morana, Florence, putting in weekend work, weeding, hauling trash, all the, and by the way, at the center, there was two Ramadas, and that's it. And today, we have built a Ramada for each branch of the military. We've redone with a donation from the Trust Company. So, that's a beautiful center Ramada now that's been redone. We have one Ramada left. We've added canopies on the side of the building. Almost the entire building has been painted inside and out, downstairs and outside. So, we're gradually making that transition. If you go to the next slide, and here's having probation, having our community volunteers, having our veteran volunteers, post nine out of Sacatoon donated pavers. That was a huge event. I did not attend because I was actually still working at the time. And they brought back thousands of pavers, and they're going to go in our memorial area when we get that started. But you can see all these folks taking time out of their schedule, or they needed commuting service to help. Next one. So, I told you earlier, the biggest thing for us is if you pay for a hotel room for a homeless person, and then you're trying to put them into a house, it doesn't necessarily work if they don't have a job or they have issues because, one, it ruins their credit if they have any. So, this Transition Center will allow us to put them in a safe environment and provide services. So, all the services that we're providing right now at the center is going to be upscaled because we're going to need counseling, we're going to need drug and alcohol, PTSD. But we're going to have activities out there that also encompasses bringing families back together because we know that what alcohol addiction and drug addiction can do to a family, can destroy them. And a lot of these guys just need a second chance of bringing that back together. We've been talking with the sheriff's office. They have that Humvee unit. You've got the vet court. This is another outlet for them to be able to bring veterans that are in jail into the transition and then transition them out instead of straight out of jail back into civilian life. We've got to break that so they don't go back to where they came from and start their habits all over. And so, this Transition Center is critical for us. You have to think of it as a hospital, and our Veterans Center downtown- You have to think of it as a hospital, and our veteran center downtown as a doctor's office. So every individual that will stay out there will have a contract and an evaluation of what they need, what services do they need, and they will have to follow it, because if they don't, they'll be booted out. I mean, you can't, you, you have to follow the program, everybody has to do their part. They'll have chores, just like in the military, but they'll have activities. And also, one of the activities that we're going to do is the reemployment. We're very close to CAC, we've already started talking to Dr. Elliott about utilizing our veterans into some of their technology programs, because there's such a huge need right now for workers. Every company that, that's coming in, every existing company that's here, every restaurant, everybody needs employees. And it's not just in Pinal County, it's all over this, this country. I just came back from South Bend, everybody had signs in their door, help wanted. So hopefully, we can make a, a little notch in that also. We're also looking at veterans that are transitioning out of the military, and that's one of our things with the workforce piece, is being able to take the mobile unit to the bases to help do some recruiting, to bring those veterans into our community to work for these companies that we're bringing in. The other thing, it's not just providing services, we also do community-type activities. A few years ago, we brought in the Vietnam Wall that heals, I don't know if any of you had a chance to, to see that, but that was, that was the new wall, because now you could etch names off of it, and it was open 24 hours a day, with staff by our veterans and volunteers, that how, we, we had like 1,200?
We had 9,000 visitors and 1,200 youth that came through in four days.
Yeah, we set up, we set up two days just for youth, we sent out letters to all the schools, if they were interested in bringing their kids by bus, and then it was like an hour and a half on each one, and we did tours. So it also brings in awareness, and that's one of the things I think you can't, you can't buy. What we're looking for is assistance to continue our mission, what we're doing, okay? You could not, you guys could not hire someone for, for the, the amount that you're giving and, and replicate what you're getting in return. I, I think, we're in Casa Grande, but we're called the Pinal County Veteran Center. With respect to you guys who have supported us over the years, you know, we're not the Casa Grande Center, we're Pinal. Our charter says Pinal County. That bus goes Pinal County. It also touches on the reservations, which may be, in some cases, just outside of the county, but they're also big supporters. So out of respect for those that have helped us and support us, we want to make sure that we continue to recognize those groups. If you look on, if one of the pages on the white sheet, you can see all of the people that have participated in sponsoring rooms for our veteran center, our transitional center in, on McCartney. I would invite each and every one of you to come Saturday and see what we're talking about when we talk about Stand Down. Our registration starts at 7:00. We have a group of motorcycle veterans that are going to bring in all of the flags. This year, we're actually hanging all five branches, including the US MIA POW. And then at 10:00, we're going to do the pinning for Vietnam era, Afghanistan, Iraqi, and Desert Storm pins. And I think Kim said now, there's also a pin for women that have served in, in the military. So we're going to do the pinning at 10:00. You're more than welcome to come in and tend and look around. I will personally give you a tour of the building, because it's going to be closed to the general public, but if you're really interested in it, you want to see what we're about, we're an open book. You can come and see just exactly what, what we do. And I, I, I want to finish off by saying, we are probably the only organization that you're funding that is a Pinal County, and we hit all of the county. We hit all of your districts, and we're continually looking to see how we can help, and we work with all of the different areas. We're kind of like the hub for when somebody needs furniture closing, and we provide the assistance. So I thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Comments?
No, no questions, just, just some comments.
Go ahead, Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and I, I think it was Stand Down that myself and Supervisor Kavanaugh at the time, and then Michelle Cortez, who's on the, on the city council for Florence, we attended the last one, and there was, you'd already done quite a bit of work at that facility, and I didn't know all, some of the background there, which is good to know. But I, I think for me, just listening, you kind of, when you come and you kind of give a report, kind of helps me appreciate a little bit better some of our grants that we've, we've given some of these nonprofit organizations, such as yourself, but then you come back and you give a report of how those funds are being used. I, I like the idea of making sure that we're making, moving forward in the awareness side. A lot of our youth and, and young people, even us as older people, and, but of course, I'm not in that category that Supervisor Miller's in, but, but we need to be reminded...
Udo knows that.
Yeah. We need to be reminded of the cost of freedom, the cost of the rights and the privileges that we have here in the United States. And so often, those, those values and things are attacked and, and we're, and looked down upon, but we need to be reminded of what our forefathers have done, what their, what our young men and women today are doing to protect those rights, not only here, but even in our law enforcement and other agencies that are here locally. So I appreciate you coming forward. The other thing is, I think that would be helpful for me, is that if you could provide some of the services and things that you are offering, and we could help put that message out in my district, and I believe all five of us here can help put that messaging out, and then even services that you need help with. You know, you're still, this is an ongoing process that you're doing at this particular facility, as well as probably some other, that's, as we grow, there's going to be more need. And what's amazing is that the volunteers that you've been able to bring, when, when Horizon was talking to you guys about what your budget was and everything else, and, and that's always amazing to me, as, as volunteers, the amount of work that you can actually get done with good, devoted volunteers. And you two and others that are sitting in this audience have done that, and I commend you, and we wouldn't be where we are today without people like you. So I appreciate your sacrifices, and they are, and your family's sacrifices.
Yeah, I hear it every once in a while.
Well, and, and you probably should.
Don't we?
You probably should, you should give that spouse a hug and tell her thank you, you know, this is, this is not just me here.
Right.
This is both of us, babe.
I, I just want to finish one other thing, because you, you sparked something. It, it is a volunteer circle. Everybody that comes in touch with our organization wants to do something or help in some way. Right now, we have a crisis with the closing, with us pulling out of Afghanistan, which people don't really realize, a lot of veterans are taking that very hard, suicides, talking about suicides, and we're trying to connect a, a chain, so we can, can stay on top of those that we feel are vulnerable right now, and they just, you know, they're not in the right state of mind, and, and Kim's always talking to a, a few of them, so that's very important to us, because right now, suicides, I heard this morning on the radio, 17 a day that are veterans. So, you know, we shouldn't have any. So, you know, that's, that's why we do what we do.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to take...
No, go ahead.
...as much as Supervisor Goodman takes. I just want to thank you for all you do for those who've served. Thank you.
Just one more comment real quick, and then if you can, and then I'll let you go that other direction.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. And that is, is that, you know, I think anybody that could appreciate and understand some of the issues surrounding Iraq, and, and the things that are occurred there, would be our Vietnam vets.
Yes.
And the struggles that they had coming home from that. And I think that's a perfect resource that actually could be utilized in helping in some of the counseling and things, and even in the healing process there. That's just a, as, as you were talking, I just made that observation, but anyway, I've, I've said my piece, and then thank you.
Supervisor Thirdey, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, yeah, we have the Vet Center in Apache Junction, and it seems to have, we don't hear from it much anymore, I don't know, I think some of the leadership has moved away. Are you aware of that center, and do you do anything to help, help it thrive?
Actually, Eagle One, when it wasn't grounded, would go to, to the center and, you know, when Eagle One goes out, sometimes we have a, a ADVS, Arizona Department of Veteran Service representative on board, we may have other folks on board besides the volunteers. The volunteers that we have that drive the bus are very knowledgeable in our organization. I mean, we can provide food boxes and stuff, but the Apache Junction has changed some leadership that you can speak to.
Yeah, I think Mike moved away.
Actually, he passed away.
Yeah.
Mike passed away. We were going to the center, Veteran Center, every quarter, helping him with the services that he needed. He did move away, and then he did pass away, and then we started going to the Genesis Project. And again, here we go with COVID, and that kind of shut that down for us. But we have been in Apache Junction, we do coordinate with some of the providers in Apache Junction to help with the veterans over there as much as we can. I think one of our biggest issues for Stand Down for Apache Junction is transportation to get them to Stand Down. Some of the providers that we've had will not transport homeless veterans with their dogs, and they are not going to leave their dogs behind, because it's a liability for them to be on the van. We've worked really closely with Cara to be able to transport as much as we can, but we're going to continue to work on that issue, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll wrap this up with just a couple of comments. You know, Udo and Kim, you're doing a terrific job there. The reason that this HOHP is, is successful is, and I've seen this in other nonprofit organizations, is the, the depth of volunteers that, that help provide these services. And if there was a way to measure the unit of services that you give and the cost, it's, it's, it's probably less than a dollar for every unit that you guys provide in that, in that respect. So, you know, I'm fully aware of you being in a, in a tough situation, I'm trying to work with some staff and see if there's some, we can find you some relief. It's kind of all came, came to a head after the fact in, in a lot of ways, so I, but you know, I've met with both of you, you, you both can contact me at any time. You're doing a terrific job, and we're going to do our best to, to figure out some resolution for you on a couple items.
Well, we appreciate it, that's all we, I mean, that's all we can do.
Right.
Thank you guys for all of your support in the past, you know, and hopefully, we can continue to, to do great things. We're not opposed to coming and doing a report on a, on a, however much you want us to do, we'll be more than happy to do that. But you can see our numbers continue to grow, and our volunteers continue to grow. And I, again, I invite you Saturday, and you can see the progress we're making on our, our new center, you can see the sweat labor that we've put in, and I think you'll be impressed, because I am.
Sure.
And it's not the fact that I've been doing a lot of it, but it's the fact that a lot of volunteers have stepped up in numerous ways.
Great.
So.
Just for me to wrap up, both of those centers are needed in order to do the model that we need, as Udo said earlier, the downtown center, Eagles Landing, that's the doctor's office, that's where we can evaluate what's needed, and that's the only way I could describe it. The transition center is a hospital where we can provide more intensive services to the veterans. Both of them are needed for the model that we want to continue to build for this county to support our veterans. This county is growing, you're bringing in more families that are coming to work and live in our communities. This veteran center, these two veteran centers are needed to continue to coordinate in all of the districts. So thank you guys very much, and I'd like to say thank you to all the veterans that are here in our, here in the center. We have some of our vet court gentlemen here, and would all the veterans please stand? Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. All right, moving along, we'll go to item number two, in discussion and an overview of the Pinal County Administrative Code. Mr. Keller.
Do you want to pull that up?
Just give him a second here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And when you step up to the podium, they just come in, right?
Yeah, I've been known to clear a room.
Well, wear that like a badge of honor. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I believe it was the chairman that asked that this be put on for a future agenda, so that the, the new board members could get an overview of what was adopted back in, actually, September 21st of 2011. So we're now 10-plus years since this thing was adopted. And what you have before you, and you all have a copy of it, it's the Pinal County Administrative Code. And let me just give you a little bit of background on this. This was adopted at the direction, or at the request, I should say, of then-county manager Fritz Baring. And let me just read to you what, what the record that we have of the minutes of that meeting. And Mr. Baring stated that the duties and responsibilities of the county manager had never been enumerated clearly in any one location. In discussion with county attorney's office and other staff, it was apparent that the county needed assistance and direction to establish the role the county manager, the clerk of the board, and internal auditor played. The proposed code spells those responsibilities out. Mr. Baring made it clear that it does not interfere with the rights and responsibilities of the elected officials. It can be amended should the board wish to give additional direction. Chairman Rios expressed concern regarding Section 3, separation of powers and the duties of government shall be divided between legislative and administrative. He does not want to lose the ability to communicate directly with staff. Mr. Baring responded that there is nothing in our county ordinances that prohibit an elected member of the board from talking to, assisting, or giving input to one or more county staff members. However, it will become more complicated for county staff as Pinal County goes to a five-member board. Motion was made by Supervisor Snyder, seconded by Supervisor Martin, to approve the Pinal County Administrative Code as presented by unanimous vote. So that's the background that we have on, on why this came about, and as you can tell, there, there are several pages to this code. It hasn't been really looked at and revised since then. We've taken some small actions over the years to provide certain kinds of responsibilities and roles, defining them more clearly for the county manager. At some point in time, those probably need to be incorporated and revised, so it's not one standalone document, as opposed to, you know, several other resolutions that we have that really apply to the districts of the county. Arguably, this, this applies to the county board as, as itself, as opposed to really spelling out that it's, also goes to those district responsibilities that fall under the county manager likewise. I know Leo wanted... I know Leo wanted, uh, wanted me to, uh, because he's out today, uh, he wanted me to make mention of, uh, two things. Number one, he provided you with a, a short, how much, can you hold up the little sheet? I think it's the ICMA. You should all have a copy of that, which is just talking about the county manager form of government and some of the positives and the roles that, that the respective parties play in this type of, of, of management. In addition, we have a short, two-minute, I think it is, two-minute video clip that, that Leo provided also that, that I'd like to play for you that helps, again, further just clarify what some of the roles are between the two, uh, the agencies, if you will, or the two departments. You know, the Board of Supervisors in the legislative function and the county manager in the administrative function in that. So, I think, Natasha, you got it? Like I said, it's only two minutes long, I believe.
Which form of local government provides the best structure for community success? You're probably familiar with the mayor council or strong mayor form. Here, the people elect one politician, the mayor, to lead the community, hire staff, and oversee all day-to-day operations and service delivery. Having a single politician at the top of the structure has its disadvantages. The elected council is largely unable to affect change because the mayor is solely responsible for the budget and staffing. Political agendas can contaminate what should be transparent, ethical, and efficient service delivery. And it also leaves that go-to person more susceptible to the influence of special interest groups, leaving ordinary voters with less say about what goes on in their community. The council manager form of government was created to combat corruption and provide for the professional management of local governments. In the council manager form, the people elected council, including a mayor, and they collectively create a vision for the community and set policy. The council then hires a non-political professional manager based on experience and credentials who implements the council's policy and delivers services equitably. The manager remains accountable to the council because if at any time the council decides that person is ineffective, they can vote to replace the manager. Having the entire elected council setting policy makes it difficult for special interest groups to influence policy. But the council manager form of government isn't just about curtailing corruption. It's about managing services in ways that get better results. An IBM report found that council manager cities are nearly 10% more efficient than mayor council cities. Historically, nearly two-thirds of U.S. municipalities with Moody's AAA bond ratings are council manager, as are the majority of all America's city award recipients. So, visit icma.org today to learn more about how your community can adopt or retain the council manager form of government.
Like I said, Leo had asked that we, uh, share that with you just again for, for background as to what he sees as his role and then also to further segue into the Administrative Code. Again, the Administrative Code was adopted by the board and it really spells out the roles of the county manager and the board, the clerk of the board's office, and also internal audit. In the past, the board has taken action to basically outsource internal audit. That was done five, six years ago, if I recall correctly. But at this time, when this was adopted, internal audit was a standalone county department that reported directly to the Board of Supervisors. So, with that, I'd just like to point out a few things in, in the code as far as where it goes or questions.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Chris. I do have, I want to go back to the, the separation of, of powers and, and actually to, uh, Mr. Rios, former Supervisor Rios's comments in that, in those minutes about the, well, I don't want to lose the ability to talk to a department. I, I understand that. I mean, I certainly, I, I see these people as my friends in a sense. I mean, I have a lot of conversations with them. But if it's a, if it's a matter of, hey, I need to know, you know, how many cars go through this intersection? I mean, the, the protocol would be that, that the county manager at least knows you're asking that question of the, you know, of the traffic engineer or something to that effect. In other words, uh, I mean, for, for etiquette or however you want to look at it, that communications with departments to board members or council members or even the mayor should travel through the, the county manager's office. I mean, am I wrong or is that a policy? Is that, what is that?
I, I would say-
Because that's really the way I was taught. Now, whether that's right or wrong, that's how I was kind of brought up in, in this elected position 18 years ago.
Well, that, it's more of a policy, I would say, and I'm not here to advocate one way or another. I'm just here to, to kind of educate slightly because this was adopted before my time. Uh, so I don't have all the background on it. I've just done some of the research about some other forms out there. Uh, there are like 370 counties that have this form of government. Uh, I mean, in looking at some of the, the cities and some of the other counties across that have similar things, in answer to that question, some of them do spell out that, that all questions are to be funneled through the county manager if there is any members of council or Board of Supervisors. I've even seen it go so far as to limit the ability of a supervisor or a council member to, well, let me give you the example, the city of Phoenix, if I'm not wrong. If a council member wants a project or information from a, a department and it's going to take more than eight hours of time, uh, the, the county man, the city manager has to approve that or, or all council has to approve that project or that thing. I've seen some other ones that, you know, if it's more than an hour worth of staff time, uh, the, the city manager needs to approve that. And, and the goal obviously was, you know, to not distract staff from doing the jobs that they were assigned to do by special projects that the, the remainder of the board or council is unaware of. So, I mean, it can go to that extent where they do spell out that level of detail. But normally, protocol would be that, you know, you, as a courtesy, you let the county manager know so that whether or not, we may already be working on that project or that may be something that he plans on getting to in the future or there may be budgetary constraints, that you can factor those kind of decision-making points in.
Yeah, I just think, I, I think it's, it's important to keep those lines of communication and it ultimately is his responsibility. And it's, I mean, we give him direction. We set policy. We give him direction. You go get it done. So, I don't want to undermine that, that workflow or that, uh, structure in any way by trying to go and telling some department head to do something that the county manager doesn't even know. I mean, it's just, is, is not right. I mean-
And, and we do, and you know, if you look through, uh, through our Administrative Code, when you start looking through that, uh, under, you know, Article 3, the county manager, you know, is to carry out the directives and policies of the board and certain things, you know, establish the budget for you, uh, report annually, uh, to hire staff, to fire staff, to discipline staff, to negotiate contracts. And then it has supervising, directing, controlling, uh, all the departments that fall underneath the, the county manager, uh, adjusting compensation levels and, and so forth. So, to that extent, there are a lot of, I'll call them overlapping responsibilities, if you will, uh, that the county manager via the board previously has delegated to him to, to enforce. Now, again, uh, this thing can all be amended, changed, deleted, however this board, you know, sees, uh, sees its role now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else having questions at this point? Okay, continue.
Okay, and then, then moving on for the clerk of the board, this also defines, you know, some of the, the roles and responsibilities.
I, I would, uh, so coming from, like, like Mr. Miller, I came from city, so I understand the council, the city manager and the, and the mayors. So, we have different sets of employees here at the county. We have those that work for the city manager. Then we also have elected, like everybody under the sheriff's department, under assessors and about communicating with them. So, there, we would not go through city manager, although he does set the budget for them. So, if we have a, an issue with sheriff's department, it would be appropriate to go through the sheriff, not the county manager. Just a little bit of discussion on that. So, I kind of know the answer. I'm just, well, the, for the, for those listening, you know, because they, they don't understand. You know, they see like the mayor of Chicago and they say, well, why didn't you do it like her? And it's nothing like that in real life and it's also not like that up here. We can't just go have employees do things for us. They don't work for us. We just are guidance to them, so. Well, can I, can I just kind of chime in on that one? I, I still think, even if I was going directly to the sheriff or the assessor or the, the recorder or any, that, that it would be beneficial that the, the county manager know that, that you can, you're, have some dialogue going on with one of these others because there is some overlap. I mean, everybody that works in the recorder's office is a county employee, not under, necessarily under Leo, but it is an employee that can go back to HR, that can go back to, you know, Mary Ellen at some point. I mean, it, it'll travel through the system some way. So, they are disconnected, but in so many ways, they are still overlapped or connected in some way.
And, and if I could just elaborate on that, and you raised a good point, because the majority of employees, you know, are merit-covered. Uh, under the county's merit system, employees from the sheriff's office have, you know, the sheriff's, uh, law enforcement merit system. So, you know, employees and going directly to departments at times, uh, needs to be folded in with the county HR, which again, reports up through the county manager, budgetary reasons, you know, policy reasons, disciplinary reasons that need to be consistently applied. So, there is some, some need or some desire, I would suspect, to have that kind of information to make sure that we're not treating employees or a department director or an elected is, is treating employees differently than, than others because that can be, you know, a, a cause for liability concern.
Absolutely. Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And kind of weighing in on this, I mean, in the course of the five years that I've even been in here and not having the opportunity or taking the opportunity, because I didn't want to put my neck out there, to serve either on a school board or on a city council, there is a lot of interlapping that does take place. And, and one of the things that I have found that, for instance, what, some of the issues we had with the assessor's office and, and the MPN numbers and, or whatever they call those MPN numbers.
MPN.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the insurance part, MPN. Anyway, but back to the point of what I'm trying to make here is that it really was a coordination between staff here, our planning and zoning committee, our department, community development department, and to help expedite things and working together. So, it did require going through Leo to, to kind of expedite that. Same thing with, and I think Supervisor Sertie would attest to this, we've got some issues in some of our, where we overlap, you and I, on our districts, to where we've brought in the sheriff's department along with staff to work together, but again, we've had to go through Leo. Now, we have made that phone call to the sheriff and asked him to be there, to be a part of the discussion because obviously some of the things to mitigate some of the problems there did require him to be a part of it. And so, but nonetheless, it still was worked through our staff, meaning the city manager, our county manager, to move, help move things in that direction. So, because of the fact that it does interlap so much, I don't see, I see the importance of actually going through, but still having the flexibility, I get that, of being able to make those phone calls to our elected officials and say, I reached out to Douglas Wolf when this was all going on and I made a phone call to him personally and said, Doug, we got a problem. Can, can we get together and let's try to figure this out? So, that's when we got our staff, meaning the county staff and his staff over there, tried to work together and, and help solve the problem. So, but again, I think our county manager needs to know what's going on in order for him to his job, do his job effectively.
Thank you. Any other comments at this point? Continue.
All right. What I was going to go into is, you know, some of the responses with the county manager. As I stated, over the years, we have delegated certain things in separate, uh, resolutions of the board, putting the county manager in charge of the library district, the flood control district, so forth. And, and I think it, it really behooves us to include those into a revision of this document, uh, you know, so that it's a one-stop, everyone can find it, what the responsibilities are. In addition, you know, there are some other things we may want to consider. For example, I know we've discussed, you know, with the board, the ability to resolve small cases, uh, you know, maybe something under $25,000 or, or something like that, you know, damage to county property or something, uh, of those type of situations where, where we're not having to bring, excuse me, we're not having to bring those items back to the board every time, but you have delegated maybe a dollar amount that, that you feel comfortable with having the county manager work with legal counsel or with the insurance carrier or, you know, risk management, if you will, to, to resolve those cases and just, you know, settle those things as opposed to bringing each and every little, you know, 25, uh, $2,000 fender bender before the board or something of that nature. So, that's an item for consideration. What I've also seen in, in another county is giving the county manager authority to approve the attorney general to represent the county in, uh, what are they, centrally-valued property cases, the tax matters where they, where we're not really defending it, but our county is part of multi-counties. Perfect example is some of the pipeline case, cases we've had over the years, some of the telephone cases where, uh, the, uh, the entity, you know, crosses multiple counties. In those centrally-valued utility type of situations, we have, and the attorney general's office goes ahead and represents the county and, you know, handles all that litigation for us. But we always take an action before the board to do that. And, you know, that'd be something the board can consider. I, I saw it in looking at, you know, other counties. Uh, I know Pima County authorizes the county manager to exercise the discretion to authorize the attorney general to represent the county in centrally-valued property cases. It's a small, it's a niche area. It doesn't happen all that often. Probably about two to three times a year, we probably get a centrally-valued property case that comes before you that, that we go ahead and approve. But sometimes it's a timing matter. Uh, we need to move those things or I, I need to make a call to the chairman, see if we can get this on because the AG wants to know whether they can represent us because an answer is going to be due soon or something of that nature. So, sometimes just timing matters. Uh, like I said, it doesn't happen that often, but there is at least two to three times a year that you probably do approve centrally-valued property cases. So, that, that would be an item for consideration. Then if we move on, the clerk?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in regards to that. I mean, what would be the disadvantages to that, given that kind of ability? Is there a disadvantage to doing something like that?
Frankly, I, I don't see any disadvantage because any settlement, ultimate settlement always comes back before the board to approve that.
Okay.
Uh, settlement with, with those, uh, tax value cases, essentially valued property cases. And, and we've multiple times have had the AG on the phone explaining whether this is a good settlement for the county or the counties or not and what percentage is it going to apply to, to our county, you know, and our school districts and the like, so.
Okay. And I think that, if I might, just, just to make sure that I'm comfortable with, if we do something like that, that, looking at the advantages, which you've already talked to and now you've already said is, according to your opinion, there's not a disadvantage.
Come back to the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I, okay.
And, and just, and I, on a lot of those types of cases too, it's kind of, there's some specialized, it's more boutique type of law, you know, attorneys that need to dive into a specialty kind of thing. We don't always have that amount of staff and time to do those types of things.
We, we traditionally have never represented the county. The county attorney's office has never traditionally represented the county in centrally-valued cases because essentially, the attorney general is representing the Department of Revenue, DOR, who sets the rules and the regs for those type of centrally-valued properties and how they're valued.
Sure.
So, it's, it's really that client. We just happen to be, you know, a taxing entity that, once they establish the rules, we have to then apply the taxes to those pipelines, those telecommunication lines or the like. So, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And as I said, I was, as moving on, once you get to Article, Article 4, it talks about the clerk of the board. And as we all know, she's responsible for preparing them, the meeting agendas, but also for training all county departments on the submittal of items through the electronic agenda process. Uh, I don't know if that needs to be, you know, enhanced in- I don't know if that needs to be, you know, enhanced any or if that's sufficient enough. I know occasionally there's some questions about how getting something on an agenda, how that might work or not work, and usually all flows through the clerk of the board's office. The one thing that we would probably also want to do, as with the county manager, who's responsible for those districts, we don't really spell out in here that the clerk of the board, although by default, because the board of supervisors sits as the board for the flood control district or so forth, is the clerk of the board and keeps all the records for those meetings. We don't necessarily spell that out as one of her duties in here. It might be good to have that, you know, clearly spelled out. Because we all always love giving Natasha more responsibility.
A larger plate, yes.
But it spells out, you know.
Duties as necessary.
Actually, we do have that in there. It's subsection P, perform other duties and responsibilities determined by law and prescribed by this board.
Just a catch-all right there.
So those are some of the suggestions that we would have and just kind of, if the board has an interest in, you know, making some revisions to this, updating it in any form, those are at least two or three of the areas that I think, you know, we could go ahead and update.
Mr. Chair, if I.
Sure, go ahead.
So, but because this has been something that was adopted clear back in 2011, and we haven't done anything to change this, this is a document that we should be adhering to now, correct?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
And there are provisions on there on section seven that talk about the implementation of this. And, you know, this code may be amended by resolution of the board or supplemented by resolutions of the board that establish amend or repeal the policy. There's been no action repealing the policy, so it is still in effect.
Okay.
Section Article Six has the, how directors are appointed to departments, if I'd taken what it looks like to me. That spells out their powers and duties.
Yes. And again, that may be an area that, it talks about department directors. What about district directors? You know, the flood control district director, you know, the public health director and so forth.
Right, right.
Now arguably, we have given that authority already, like I said, to Leo Ver, by way of other resolutions this board has passed over the years.
I was just going to say, didn't we do something about that at one point?
Yes, absolutely.
But, Mr. Chair, shouldn't all the, shouldn't all those resolutions then be codified into some document like this?
Yes, I agree, they should. And I think we need to go back and see because I, we may have done it on a couple of districts. I don't know.
We have done it on several different occasions. Flood control I'm aware of, library district I'm aware of.
Public health.
Public health, we've done it on that. And then we've done it for a few separate officials. County engineer, for example, that's one that comes to mind. That's a statutory creation, and to make sure that it's clear that that falls underneath the county manager.
Right, right.
So, am I leaving anything out, Hamachi?
Air quality.
Air quality is another one.
That's right. So we should try and weave that back into this document, even though we have resolutions out there that we've done that, but that again, makes it, puts a bow on it.
Well, it just makes it a one-stop shop, you know, so you don't have to go search for it. And then at that point in time, we probably might want to actually consider putting this in our, our green book of ordinances that Natasha keeps an update, so that everyone can find it there. Right now, it's a standalone document because it's administrative code, but it probably has a place to be in that document, so it's online and everyone can find it.
I agree.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Goodman?
So with the things that, the amendments and things that we've done in the past, I mean, quite honestly, five years I've been in here, this is the first time I've actually seen this document. Now, whether or not it was presented to me before, which I do not remember, or whatever the case may be, this is the first time I've seen this document in five years that I've served here. However, I followed the example of some of the, and was educated by staff. This is the way we do things. But still, it would have been nice to have had this document five years ago when I first came in. So it's kind of good that we've got three new members that we're bringing this to the, to the board as a whole right now to look at. Can you give me an idea when you can kind of get to where all the additional amendments and things that you have that will be brought kind of to, in a package to us that we could actually look at and adopt?
Well, what I would request though is, if there are any other sections that a board member feels needs to be changed, if they could just, you know, send an email directly to myself or Kent, then we can consider that part and see if it's in there, if it's already spelled out. Because some things are spelled out, they're just in awkward positions, awkward places in the code. But I am happy to go ahead and prepare a copy for the board's consideration. We have a meeting next week that's a little short, probably the first meeting of December, so that the board can go ahead and adopt this, or not, and have a red line version of the additions we've put in there and leave it to the board's discretion.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might continue. Can you get, for myself personally and maybe the others as well, some of the amendments and things that we've done to some of the operations, how they work? So that we can look at all those, because in, since 2011, there's probably a lot out there that's happened, that we probably ought to be looking at and really looking at closely.
I believe there's probably about six resolutions, if I recall correctly, that the board has adopted throughout the years. So it's not a huge volume.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, would that just be, would that just be the red line version that you'd provide with those added in?
Correct. Well, and I'm be happy to attach, you know, the resolutions that the board adopted, you know, vesting the county manager in authority to oversee, appoint, direct the public health director, for example, the library director, the flood control director. Those were done in, you know, separate documents, so we have those. I can just provide that, but I think just some catch-all provisions in here, you know, over the board of supervisors and all boards or commissions that the board acts as the governing body of, it will catch everything that way without having to spell everyone out.
The same thing you did to Natasha on P and hers.
Right, gotcha. Other duties as assigned.
And just for some historical, a lot of those resolutions were because all of a sudden it was an emergency. We needed to make a decision. We had to do something and we wanted to make sure that we had spelled out someplace along the way that the county manager was going to be the person that made that decision. And it was, we were more reactionary than, you know, than proactive. We were reactionary to some of those things. So it was great to clean this up. I don't know when the first time was that I saw this document, but I've always, I've always known about it and I understood it when I read it. And I can't tell you when I first saw it, but, like I said, it kind of fell in place with the guidelines that I've always operated under as an elected official. So it made sense to me.
And I think, you know, taking the comments and so forth, going forward, you know, whenever we have a newly elected board member, you know, Natasha, myself, you know, and staff, you know, have, you know, an orientation, you know, a training and so forth. And I think, you know, we can probably do a better job of including this specifically in there and calling it out. I mean, I think we reference it, but we don't really call it out and go through portions of it.
Right. So, okay. Anything else to that? Have you got direction?
I believe I do.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. You want to do the, I was going to say, you want to do four first and then do three?
It's your pleasure.
That falls right in line though. Four falls more in line with what we just got done talking about, right? Thank you. Then we'll bring the main event up.
Oh, that's the cleanup act, aren't you? Do we have my little thumb drive?
Did I mess you up, Natasha?
No. Well, not me, you didn't mess me up yet.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that I noticed Mr. Volker sitting in the front of the classroom with his desk. He's in trouble. Okay.
That's what he said when you get in trouble. All right.
Mr. Chairman, members, what I have done and what you have been provided with is, just for discussion purposes only, you know, these were just my attempt to put together some more detailed rules of procedures, rules of order for the board for their meetings. The prior adopted rules by the board was done in January 9th of 2019, and it is essentially a one-page, 14-point document. In preparing for this item, I tried to look at other, if you will, best practices or other counties, other cities, other jurisdictions, on how they ran some of their meetings and to the extent of detail that they provided for the boards, their commissions, their councils to go by. As way of background, you know, I checked the 15 counties and I came across five that had adopted official rules to go by. Pima County has 16 sections for theirs. Ours has 14 sections as adopted. Maricopa County has 13 points that, a one-pager similar to ours that they utilize. Yavapai has a four-page document that has 24 points, excuse me, maybe a three-page document. And Mojave County has one that's about 12 pages long, but it goes into other things such as how to, how to request to present before a board item. If you're a call to the public, here's a speaker form to fill out and here's the information that we want you to have and when you have to have it and where to submit it and the like. In addition, you know, there, because there's so few counties that really have adopted official rules, I also went and looked at, you know, the League of Cities and Towns. Because, you know, they have 91 councils, cities, towns, that have meetings very similar to our meeting. And I went to look at, see how they did it. I had first checked with CSA to see if they had, the County Supervisors Association, to see if they had any specifically spelled out, you know, policies, procedures that they could recommend, that they endorsed and the like, and there was nothing really there. And as the fault, normally CSA will direct you to the League of Cities and Towns, or NACO for that matter, for those type of things. So the next place I checked was the League of Cities and Towns. Could we pull that one up? Because I just wanted to point out to you, and it's a document that's going to look similar to this. And this was what, it should be the first one up there, the first PowerPoint, yeah. Yeah, under this, there we go. The anatomy of a council meeting, this was, you know, it's a little over a year old now, but this was what the League of Cities says. If we can just go, it talks about council meetings in general and roles of the council members and the like. But specifically at the very first paragraph there, it talks about council procedures. Each city and town should adopt procedures to govern the conduct of council meetings. We recommend adoption of your own rules rather than following Robert's Rules of Order since they were not written to cover legislative bodies like city and town councils. Procedures should include the basics of how a meeting will be conducted, but also may include such items as council decorum and the like. So I just wanted to point that out to you. That's why I took the attempt to go ahead and see what other cities and towns and other counties have adopted and try to pull some of the best practices from them to incorporate to you for consideration purposes. So where else did I look? I did look to the city of Chicago. I looked at a city of, you know, Colorado Springs, Colorado City, Salem, Oregon, city of Florence, Apache Junction, some cities in Texas, Allen, Texas, and others, you know, and there's a smattering of them out there, but they tend to all say a lot of the same type of things. And it's really more of an art than it is a science as to how you want to conduct your meetings and how you want to go ahead and vest authority in various board members or not. And so, in addition to the draft that I prepared for you, if we just go back to the first discussion, thank you. I just tried to lay it out, you know, as the meeting progresses, you know, first with, you know, the chairman, the vice chair, what their responsibilities, you know, could be. And then, you know, what their roles are. We can, again, you can add, you can delete, you can change the dates, the time periods in here. These are just for discussion purposes only, that I wanted to get the board thinking about. So, you know, in section two, the chair and vice chair, it talks about calling the meeting to order and who decides points of orders and the like. The one thing that I did add in here, and I wanted to point it out to you, that if a board member disagreed with a ruling of the chair, they have the ability to appeal that to the remainder of the board. Some bodies require that to be seconded, some don't. And that's a call for you if you want that process or not. I just put it in there whether, you know, no second needed to be required. But I also then just, you know, again, you can change this. Tried, you know, to confine debate between, you know, the chair and whoever the person is that's, you know, asking for the appeal, what's the basis for each side? And then a decision can be made to the whole board, whether that appeal should stand or not. And just to take some of the questioning out of that, I included, you know, how that voice should, the chairman should ask for that question, you know. Show the decision of the chairman, stand as a decision of the board, you know. To the point, the parts where I could spell out, you know, how you should ask the question, I tried to do that. We don't have to. Again, delete, add, whatever you feel, just for discussion purposes. So I wanted to point that one out to you. That's why that's there. Can I move, should I move on? Any questions there? One of the other points that I did was, under subsection B, I said that the chairman or any member of the board could request to reorder an item on a board meeting. Again, the reason for that is, you know, a board member may have a dignitary or someone that they want to point out that has a commitment that needs to leave, and they wanted to call that person out, and that item is until later in the board meeting. So, you know, again, just be able to request to reorder those type of things. But I did put a limit on it about adding items to an agenda. We currently have, you know, an item on our board meetings that allow for members to ask for something on a future agenda item. That, I would suggest that we still keep that, but I put in here also under subsection B that any board member, elected official or department director, may add an item to the agenda. However, prior approval of the chair would be required for items within eight days of a regularly scheduled meeting or 48 hours of a special meeting. My reasoning behind that was, we've instituted a process where the clerk's office has, you know, the draft agendas done, and we try to, you know, talk with district staff as to if they have questions that their board member may have that we need to research and do. And I wanted to make sure we still had the time period to try to make those dates. And eight days seem to be the right, it could be shorter, it could be longer. And 48 hours, again, was mainly for posting purposes. For, you need to give 24 hours posting of any additional or any addendums to a board meeting. So again, I tried not to make it a last-minute thing for the clerk of the board, and that's the only rationale between picking out 48 hours versus 72 hours. So. Now, item C, you know, talks about, you know, keeping decorum, if you will, and disruption by, you know, public and the like. Again, I saw in one, I think it was Pima County actually, that actually calls out that they can have a services of a sergeant-at-arms. That's the only county, if I recall correctly, that actually spelled it out, that give the ability to have that. Otherwise, they pretty much vest that solely in the chairman to take appropriate action as they see fit to, you know, to remove someone from the audience, to limit time, to basically, if things get unruly, to recess and reconvene at a later point in time. So those are things that are spelled out then in items C and D under that section. One of the items that I added in there was, because it was not very specifically spelled out in our meeting minutes, I mean, in our meeting procedures, is item E, that the chairman has the authority to limit time for debate on any topic, but that he could not eliminate debate. So again, occasionally we have time periods that, you know, we're being pushed up against or things have been repetitive. So at times, you know, and again, that's So at times, you know, and again, that's spelled out pretty much in the Robert's Rules, that if things get to be repetitive, the chairman has the ability to limit those type of things. If, we've heard this before, we've heard it two times now, we have four other people speaking the same thing. You have the ability to try to, you know, keep the meeting moving in an orderly flow. So that's why that was in there. And then just, you know, some additional things under subsection F, having to deal with, and this is the public comment component of it. And this is, you know, clearly spelled out in the open meeting laws, that there doesn't need to be public comment. Some places limit it to one minute, some places limit it to three minutes, some places have done away with it all. Some jurisdictions limit it to just 30 minutes on a whole, and that's all. And I think that's the City of Phoenix who limits it to 30 minutes for the public comment. Not an individual, but on the whole. So that's what subsection F was attempting to address. And then under subsection 3, I just tried to spell out the types of motions that could be made, and whether or not they need to be debated or seconded and so forth. Again, a lot of these come right out of Robert's Rules of Order, and a lot of the other, you know, board and council meeting guidelines that they have. And then, that takes care of Section C, D, and E, having to do with, you know, more procedural aspects on the rules, on whether, you know, to suspend a rule, when a motion needs a second, or when to call the question, so that it can actually be voted on at that point in time. Item 4 is an item that this board may not want. It has to do with the point of personal privilege. And again, this is mainly from Robert's Rules as to what points of personal privilege should be limited to. And I tried to include those in there. Having to do, you know, temperature, a dignitary in attendance, an issue of noise and the like, as opposed to a point of personal privilege on something otherwise. Again, we don't have that in our rules right now. You don't have to, again, it's not a requirement. It's just a method to try to hopefully, you know, head off any potential open meeting violations if someone goes too far a track as to something that's not really on the agenda. So that was the only purpose for that. Trying to put some guardrails on it, if you would.
As I was going to add to that, because sometimes a personal point of privilege can appear to be an agenda item that's not on the agenda. And you want to be really careful of doing that, because that's not the purpose of personal point of privilege, if I understand that right.
That's correct, that's correct. And again, I tried to spell out where they really allow those personal points of privilege. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a personal point of privilege. There's too much noise in the background, I can't hear the question. You know, could we please quiet down? Excuse me, you know, it's really cold in here, can we turn the heat up? You know?
That happens.
Just bring your own dog.
And then Item 4, I'm sorry, Item 5, voting. And again, I just tried to clear out that, how the voting needs to be done, yea or nay, and that if there's any question, you know, we can call for a roll call vote, but that in cases of tie, and I believe this is already on our rules, you know, it shall be considered defeated. And to memorialize that, that board members aren't able to abstain unless they actually have a conflict that's been filed with the clerk of the board prior in writing, declaring that they have a conflict on an issue. Otherwise, they should be voting on an item. So that was Section 4.
And to abstain, you have to declare that before the meeting. I mean, that has to be filed with the clerk.
If you're abstaining because you have a conflict of interest, really what you have is a policy, not a policy, a state law, that says you show, you know, fill out in writing to the clerk of the board indicating that you have a conflict and what the basis is. And as a result, then you do not participate in any manner on that item. That means you're not going to executive session, you don't participate in discussion, or any of those type of proceedings.
Mr. Chairman, question. So with conflict like that, so if, say, one of us were to file a conflict of interest paper, would that be reviewed by you and say yes or no?
Correct. And that's how it has happened in the past on at least two occasions I can recall. If the chairman doesn't mind calling him out. At one point in time, you know, he had asked, do I have a conflict of interest?
It's always me.
Hey, you're the head guy, you know?
He had asked, you know, legal, do I have a conflict of interest? Because we're voting on something dealing with the court reporters. And my wife's a court reporter. You know, and I know in the past Supervisor House had asked for one before, and the issue escapes me what his question was. And we opine that yes, this is, or no, this isn't, or, you know, it could be. And you may want, you know, out of an abundance of caution, declare a potential conflict and, you know, file something with the clerk of the board.
That's what could be. So for the caution, just take caution. I removed myself from that.
Are we making the term abstain and recusal interchangeable? Because I believe there is some difference.
And that's purely a board's call. We could make them interchangeable, or we could spell out recusal also, if the board wishes to do that.
Like, for instance, for recusal, the person usually leaves the room and doesn't even participate. But with abstain, maybe they're there for the discussion, but then they just abstain for a reason. So, see the subtle difference there?
I do, and I can see those situations happening more so in an executive session type of situation, because the meeting is going to be public anyway. So whether or not the person actually removes his physical presence from the meeting, and if they're abstaining, they're not voting or participating in any manner. But they should be able to, they hear the proceeding and they see what the debate is. I mean, and if that's a board concern, you know, we can look, you know, and spelling that out a little bit more about a recusal then. And then, the last thing I had was, you know, Section 6, that just talks about some general rules of the quorum. Again, a lot of these things I pulled from other counties. I pulled from, you know, the City of Phoenix. I pulled from Mojave and, you know, Pinell, Yavapai specifically. So it has to do with, you know, personal attacks and points of order, and how that should be done. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If you'd like me to go into anything more specific. I also have attached several of the other documents to this on the PowerPoint, if you have questions, and I'm happy to send those to you. I mean, I have the Yavapai, I have the City of Phoenix. City of Phoenix rules were just adopted in June of '21, that spell out theirs. And I think Mojave was adopted, renewed in '19, in June of '19. And then, let's see, I don't have a date on Yavapai's. Maricopa County was, you know, just, the last time they did theirs was in 2003. So that's kind of gives you the, Pima County was 2015. So again, you know, not terribly old. Like I said, the Phoenix is the most recent. They just re-adopted theirs in '21. So I'm happy to take any questions, or any comments, or any areas that you would like me to further explore. Again, it's just for discussion purposes, to provide the board some guidance. The board can continue to use the rules that they have, they can adopt something different.
I would like to approach this similar to the Administrative Code. If we could all study it, look at it, highlight things we either like or don't like, and get back to the county attorney's office. I think, is that a...
That's fine, I would just caution, please do not copy any other board member on your correspondence to the county attorney's office. We do not want inadvertently to have an open meeting violation. But if you have questions on an area, or if you have suggestions for better language, or I don't think this is clear, or I think we don't need this, this section, then I can try to incorporate those comments and bring another draft back before the board, you know, if that's the board's desire.
This one may be a little more difficult than the Administrative Code in some ways, I mean, seriously.
There is a lot more in here right now than what is normally there. Like I said, some of these are two pages long, some of them are one pages long. Some of them, you know, some counties don't have them at all.
Right. There's some good stuff in here, but again, how much? We've actually gotten along for a long time with a one-pager.
I think it's good to clarify a lot of the issues that we've had or are having, and I think this is a great document to look at and discuss a little further.
Yeah, I agree.
One thing, like, another thing that some of the folks watching may not understand, this is a work session. We kind of speak more free during this than during a regular, like now we're just having conversation because we are working on something. Whereas opposed to the actual meetings where there's votes and whatever, there's a little more. So I appreciate the fact that we don't have to kind of be recognized every time. We can just talk by ourselves during work sessions. That makes it easier to get some work done. This was laying up here on the dais when we got here. So has Supervisor Kavanaugh already seen this? Or, well, he's not seen it yet. He's obviously very passionate about this.
It was attached as a backup to the agenda. And it was sent out, so, yeah, it was one of the attachments.
All right, I didn't download that, so that's my fault.
Yeah. The clerk just also printed off a copy for everyone so you'd have it, you know, readily available.
And just to get it out there, the way there's the 13 items and then number 14, I do think we should stay with Robert's Rules. I don't think we should go away from that. I think just the common courtesy of us getting along up here will make everything work well like it has been.
Well, I see the Robert's Rules, if I may, as, I use this analogy, the building code. When a city or a town or a county adopts a building code, they don't necessarily adopt 100% of it. They modify it to work in their environment and their standards. And I think this Robert's Rules, I mean, there's parts of it that, yeah, we use and almost appear that we have been using in a sense. But do we need all of it, is my question? And can we say we're using Robert's Rules with these modifications? Or these exclusions, or something to that effect? Because it, Robert's Rules was not designed, when it was first written, was for large bodies of, I think, 12 or more, or something like that. There were some aspects to it that were more in a lot larger setting. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on it. There's aspects that are absolutely good, that help you keep the meeting in control. But when you say we're going to use Robert's Rules, I don't think we should say we're going to use Robert's Rules on every, every aspect of it. We're going to use portions of Robert's Rules. That's my opinion.
But it does seem to be useful as an outline to...
It is an outline, and I agree with that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Goodman.
But based on what you've already said, there are some parts of this right here that you even put in that has parts of Robert's Rules even in this right here, correct?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And Supervisor Kavanaugh and Supervisor, and all of us actually, has the opportunity to look at this and even include parts of Robert's Rules that we think should be a part of this. And to that point, I do believe that Robert's Rules sometimes get in the way of really giving the flow of what happened in our last meeting I don't want to see ever happen again, quite honestly. And there's a lot of things that I personally can do differently myself to where we keep some good order to what we're moving forward. And so when I look at this right here, and some of the, there needs to be some rules that we're adopting, that we're using, that we're going by, that we all respect, and we all say we're going to adhere by it. And so I would hope that Supervisor Kavanaugh would give his, which I'm sure he will be, his input on this. And Supervisor Sertie, as you look at these rules and go through these, you'll see that there's parts of Robert's Rules that are in here that actually go to some of the questions that have been, about more of a debate before we actually do the final vote on it. That was something that I think in Robert's Rules that it actually allows for before a final vote is actually done. It allows for more discussion to take place, and even more of a debate. And I think that's been something that has been spoken of quite passionately about why these things need to be included in here so that there is more opportunity for debate. And so, looking at this, I think this is one that you've done very well on. I will have some input on it myself as we move forward, so, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman. And the debate, you know, is in there, and that is, you know, a lot of the concepts may have come from other cities, towns, counties, but a lot of the concepts are right out of Robert's Rules, and the terminology, calling the question, you know, move for this, calling for debate, those type of things. Again, you know, the board may not want to have debate limited to five minutes on a topic. But there's the ability in there that, you know, you can request additional time if you feel you need it. It's just a matter of, you know, how the board wants to have the flow of their meetings conducted.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And just real quick, this meeting is being recorded correctly, correct? So Supervisor Kavanaugh can watch this in its entirety and see and hear the discussion and the debate that we've just had. Anything else, Counselor?
Nothing to that.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Keller?
I guess I just, if I could, just one last final statement. I don't want to get the rules and hung up on rules to where the flow of the meeting is more about the rules rather than trying to conduct the business of this county. And that's really what, that's what we need in place so that we can move forward on issues and get them solved, so, thank you.
Okay. I'll bring in the closer now.
Good morning, Chair, Board. Kent Volkmer, Pinell County Attorney. Supervisor Sertie, I want to thank you for kind of clarifying, because that's what I really wanted to lead off with today, is this is a discussion. This is a work session where we're really trying to evolve, have a meaningful conversation. And then what we're looking for is guidance from the collective board. We believe we have an idea of what this board wants, but we're not always right. And if that's the case, we need direction. And we did provide to you a sample resolution, but I want to kind of explain how we got to this sample resolution. While the last few board meetings, the issue of the invocation or the prayer before the beginning of any board meeting has really come into the public eye. This board's aware, the public may not be aware, that we've been working on this issue for now several months. There was a number of months ago, a email that was sent, the boards discussed it. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes that's been done on this. So this is not a, you know, just a crack response to the last couple of weeks. This has been in the works for quite some time. I'd really like to begin by giving my team a ton of credit. They have researched this issue very extensively. I just, to give you sort of a breadth, we've looked at cities in Florida, all the way to cities in California. We've looked at school boards to see how they handle things. We've looked at federal law, we've looked at local case law, we've looked at U.S. Supreme Court law. So we can provide this board with the best sort of parameters, depending on what they, how you choose to proceed forward. Really what we have, though, before you is there's essentially three options. You can eliminate prayer in its entirety, that is an option. You can keep the invocation and prayer as it has been since I've been here for the last five years, and as far back as we're really able to see. We can keep that status quo. Or the board can take a different position moving forward. Those are really sort of the three options. All three of those are legally justifiable. All three of those are legally permissible and fine, and we can support the board. What we have before you is what we think is the best option. Let me clarify, this is what I believe, after doing our research, after meeting with our team, this is what we think is the best option. Because what we have is if you want to proceed forward with prayer, and it has been my assumption based on communication with the board, that the board's intention is to continue with an invocation. What we have is we have case law that sort of gives us the gutters, if you will, if we're in a bowling alley. So we know, you know, if you go too far right, too far left, you know that you're in violation of federal law. And really what this resolution does is it outlines specifically the intention of the invocation, why we do the invocation, and it also keeps, I think, us in line. It also lets the public know where the guidelines are, and it lets any presenter, any chaplain, anybody that's going to provide the invocation, where they're at. It gives adequate direction, we believe, to the clerk. So this is something that we actually... that we actually in in large part, we took this almost verbatim from a city. Sorry, I'm not sure if that's me or not. We took it from a city in Florida, actually.
Goodman, he's clowning around.
When we reviewed everything, this really, you know, in legalese, it was succinct. I think for John and Jinky Public, they'll probably say, give me a break. Six pages is succinct. But from our perspective, this is because, again, it does give very clear direction. You know, there was a complaint. And when I say complaint, like an emailed complaint, not a legal complaint, there was nothing filed against us, but said that, hey, we're violating the Establishment Clause. We're violating constitutional law by proceeding forward with an invocation. We did research that. We looked at all points, why they believed that was the case. And I will tell you that I am confident that we are not violating the Establishment Clause. If we were to proceed forward as currently constituted, our office would have no problems and no hesitancy defending this board. Just because that's the way we've always done it's legal doesn't mean it's the best practice, though. And what's before you is really the best practice. I will tell you that the Supreme Court has not ruled or made a ruling on this topic in quite some time. It's not something that frequently comes up. The most two recent rulings are actually out of the Sixth Circuit, Sixth Circuit and the Fourth Circuit. In the Sixth Circuit, they specifically said that they talked about legislative, but you're a legislative body under a kind of context. So legislative prayer is constitutionally permissible. Under very similar circumstances, the Fourth Circuit said it's not constitutionally permissible, but they made one caveat, and they said that the prayer that was being permitted was allowed to denigrate and to belittle other faith. And if it's permitted and it is intentionally denigrating or suggesting that people, in this case, that were non-Christian or somehow less, less people or less than those that subscribe to the Christian faith, they said that's getting in that that gutter, if you will, again. And they said, as long as you kind of stay between those lines, you're fine. So the Sixth and Fourth Circuit don't necessarily disagree with each other.
Kent, what year? Do you have the years on those?
Like 14, 14, 13, right around in there, I believe. I think one was, I know I have them here. So I know the first one, I believe, is the Bormuth case. Forgive me if I'm butchering that name, but. Chris, if you find it, let me know. I'm looking at the Michigan. Oh, yeah. So actually, 2017. The Bormuth case, which is the Michigan case, which is your Sixth Circuit, is 2017?
So so it is recent.
Correct. So the appellate courts have. The Supreme Court is the one that has not.
It's not gone to the Supreme Court.
The U.S. Supreme Court, the last ruling, I think, we have or decision we have is would be Greece and Marsh. And I don't have I don't have those, but they're not. There's nothing within three or four or five years in the U.S. Supreme Court.
See, the line is 2017 and the other one, District of Maryland, 2019, Carol, that's one.
Hake's different, though. So so, yeah, the 2017 are the two competing cases. There was a case out of Hake called Hake, excuse me. That's out of Maryland. That's more recent, 2019. For different reasons, I wouldn't bring that up at this time because essentially it was settled. So there was a dispute. The judge inclined, you know, indicated how they were inclined to rule, but ultimately, the parties negotiated off to the side and resolved it. So there's not a formal opinion that that I would feel comfortable relying on at this point.
And the town of Greece is 2014.
There we go. Greece is the most recent from the U.S. Supreme Court. That's 2014. So you're at seven years old now. And you're looking at Marsh, which is sort of the preeminent case, who I believe at 73 when that one came out.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. So again, there's for a legal precedent, there's not a ton. That's not a ton of guidance for us. There's not a Ninth Circuit opinion, which is what normally we would expect. That's the circuit that we sit in. So there's nothing we're relying on there. We're sort of just reading between the lines, if you will. There are a couple things that I want to to read to the board. This is actually from Supreme Court Justice, former Justice Anthony Kennedy. And this is what he said. Opening prayers, and then this is the quote, "Meant to lend gravity to the occasion and reflect values long part of the nation's heritage. Prayer that is solemn and respectful in tone, that invites lawmakers to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends before they embark on the fractious business of governing, serves that legitimate purpose." That is what the Supreme Court said. If that is the purpose of the prayer, then it is constitutionally permissible. And that is citing Justice Anthony Kennedy and, I believe, the Greece case. There's a couple other, I think, actually, I'm going to steal that paper back from you because it's got my highlights. Including those that we looked at, I did not include. The City of Phoenix, just recently as recently as June, Chris mentioned it earlier, June of 2021, actually affirmed its long-held tradition of beginning each public session with a prayer. So we do have that local precedent, if you will, that the City of Phoenix has said prayer is appropriate. It's longstanding tradition. The language they used, the City of Phoenix maintains a longstanding tradition of invocations at or preceding formal meetings. An invocation before the formal meeting shall be scheduled as follows and gives the priority upon which it should occur. We also reviewed specifically the local case that occurred between the Satanic Temple and the City of Scottsdale. The City of Scottsdale essentially said to the Satanic Temple that they were not permitted to do an invocation. The court ruled in favor of the City of Scottsdale. It didn't have to do with the nature of what was going to be presented, but the fact that the Satanic Temple did not have a direct connection to the City of Scottsdale. So the City of Scottsdale said, look, we'll allow anybody to come as long as you have sufficient ties to our community. The Satanic Temple that attempted to present was actually based out of Tucson. And they said, that's not within our parameters. We have clear parameters. These are, you know, longstanding traditions, and that falls outside. So they were denied. And in that case, the court did uphold the refusal.
So Kent, those boundaries, are those boundaries the city limit lines? Are those boundaries the county? Are those boundaries? What are the what's the definition of the boundary in this scenario?
So I would suggest to you that it's how you're going to define it, that you need to be clear. Our proposal to you would be that they have to have an actual presence, a physical brick and mortar presence in our community. That is my recommendation. That is our office's recommendation to you. There's a wide variety of how you could establish that. But if you don't define it, then it becomes very difficult. For example, with the proliferation of, you know, remote viewing and look, I go to a large church that's based out of the valley. There's a subset that's in Casa Grande that I attend. But sometimes if my kids are sick, I just watch it from my house. And it's really no different. I'm given that same opportunity. So some people are watching it from their homes. You could be doing that, though, if the sermon is being from Florida or Poland or anywhere else in the world. So the brick and mortar for us is what our recommendation is because we know that they have a firm relationship specifically in our county. It's not designed to necessarily exclude anybody. It's just to set those defined parameters. So the way that Scottsdale said is they have to have ties to our community, significant longstanding ties to our community. That was a very generic definition. The court acknowledged it was very generic, but said even under a fairly broad reading of what that is, somebody in Tucson is not going to be considered to be within that that category.
All right. Okay, thank you. You have any other questions?
My hope is this is more of a discussion. I can talk. Look, I'm an attorney and a politician. I can blab all day long, but.
I was trying to catch you on the boundaries.
It's again, there's not been specific litigation on it. I think my recommendation would be whatever this board believes is reasonable. And if if we think you're going too far out, we would caution you and try and bring you back in. But it's really up to this board. Again, our suggestion is merely a suggestion. That is very clearly, easily identifiable. This board may say, we want it to be more broad. You know, there are plenty of home-based churches. And you may say, you know, if they're not registered with the assessor's office, we're not going to exclude them. There's a whole lot of ways that this board could move forward. It's really this is the policy that we talked about in administrative code. How does the board really want to proceed? We can give recommendations, but ultimately, it's up to the the five gentlemen at the dais to make that decision.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So as you know, we get correspondence all through the week before, after, during the meetings. And one of them was, I get an email, which probably everybody did. We were all copied on it, acting as if we were commanding people to stand or kneel. And I think the chairman chose his words very carefully before the last invocation, where you said something like, anyone choosing to stand can at this time. And I think that's important. And I think that laid it all out there. And I, as I looked at the audience, I saw one person did choose to sit. And I don't see any problem with making it an option like that. And I, yes.
For those that would like to participate, I think, as I I worded it, in the prayer and the pledge, please stand at this time. And I did it prior to gaveling the meeting up as well, which was a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So anyway.
And that is consistent with case law. One of the things that one of the judges pointed out is the target of your audience are adults. It's not as if they're, you know, young children that are under your control. So a mature adult would always have the ability to either not comply, or they could remove themselves for that period. They could step outside. They could come back in. The key is, we just can't take notice and say, oh, you know, John Smith didn't bow his head, or John Smith, whatever, or Jane Doe did this, and then not allow them to speak. If we took any sort of retributive action because they didn't, that would clearly be unconstitutional. But allowing them, and that would be our recommendation, that that we, you know, invite those that so choose and not command or mandate or anything along those lines. The closer you get to mandating, the closer you get to those out-of-bounds lines.
Oh, absolutely.
This has been an ongoing discussion. Again, what we have presented to you is the resolution that is part of the board's agenda. So any member of the public can review that. The board is not required to do that. The board has to make no decisions and in fact, can make no decisions today because we are set just for a work session, just for discussion. My anticipation is, in the near future, there is going to be a formal agenda action item. What I would ask of this board is to review that document, much like we've talked about in the last couple of items, and redline it. If there's something you think you don't like, scratch it. If you say, look, I don't think we need to do a resolution, because we're not required to do a resolution. We're not. There's no obligation. There's no legal requirement. This is merely our recommendation. And this is, while I did say we took it from a city in Florida primarily, it is cobbled together with some other ideas. But we took a lot of the quotes, some of the very first wherashes were reused. I mean, at this point, it doesn't make sense for us to recreate the wheel. It was done very, very well, in our opinion. But ultimately, my opinion means very little because it's the board. And if you just say, this isn't the direction we want to go, what I would ask is you give us further direction. And if you give us no direction, if we do nothing, then the status quo will continue.
Just real quick, it talks about adopting invocation policy. The policy would be a separate document. Is that correct? Or is it woven into this?
It's woven in.
Okay.
If you wish it to be separate, it could be separate. If you said, I want it in administrative code, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do, but the proposal that we provided to you, it's actually embedded into it. And in fact, if you look at about the third page or so, it's a little further back than that, I guess. I apologize. The fourth page.
I haven't read it all, so I was just curious.
It's wordy. It's it's got some legalese.
But the policy is in here.
And this is detailed. Again, if you were to look at the fourth page, for example, this actually gives direction to the clerk. Like, this is the letter that you should be sending out for people that want to to provide the invocation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just add a little bit to that, because I helped put some of this together for Kent. One of the thoughts behind that component was to let the public know what the actual process is for getting on the list or presenting. It's always been routinely done through the clerk's office, but setting out, here's a specific letter where that you, the clerk, will send out. Here's how you're going to try to make up your mailing list, if you will. Here's how people can get on it if they want and so forth. And then here's how, you know, you can, you know, go ahead and schedule the presenters for the next quarter, for the next quarter, for the next quarter, and so forth. So it actually just tried to memorialize a process so that anybody out there that was interested would know what to do.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
The quote that you gave earlier from the circuit judge, what quote? Read that quote again, would you, real quick?
The the purpose of.
Yeah, the very, yeah.
So this is from former Justice Anthony Kennedy. Opening prayers are, quote, "meant to lend gravity to the occasion and reflect values long part of the nation's heritage. Prayer that is solemn and respectful in tone, that invites lawmakers to reflect upon shared ideals and common ends before they embark on the fractious business of governing, serves that legitimate purpose."
And maybe a suggestion in some of the invites that we include that quote, because that's really the purpose that, you know, that's one of the things whenever I first came into office and and the prayers that have been offered in the meetings that I've attended, that we've done that, it those prayers have always been to that nature.
Supervisor, I would note, if you go to the fourth, whereas there, sorry, it's the fifth, there is another quote that is similar. And this actually comes from the town of Greece versus Galloway. And it says legislative prayer lends gravity to public business, reminds lawmakers to transcend petty differences in pursuit of a higher purpose, and express a common aspiration to a just and peaceful society. So while that's not the exact quote, there is a quote that is very similar that does come from a justice that's actually embedded in the proposed resolution.
Okay, okay.
We can certainly add, you know.
No, I was just making that part. What I was suggesting is that we make that part of of those that are wanting to say prayers, that's what they do. They they come here with the intent and purpose of calling on a higher power to to help and assist us in what our jobs and responsibilities are here.
Let me let me dig into just real quick because I got this whole, I got this brick and mortar thing bouncing around in my head. And we have had quote unquote chaplains that may not be the minister of a church, but either through the sheriff's office, I know in the past, we had a number of them. Is it is that addressed in here? You know, and that goes to the whole TV thing or the online services now. I mean, there'd be there can be an argument that, no, well, you know, I'm an associate pastor of this church, but my church is in Florida, you know, you know, you know, somebody splitting hairs and those types of things. And and that would be, you know, you could, I could see how on the satanic side of people, they would say, well, geez, we're in this large group, just because there's only 10 of us in Pinal County, or there's only whatever, you know, we still have a presence. And I just want to, I'm just trying to play the, you know, the devil's advocate as it might be, just because I know what I could get hit with going forward. So I just, I'm trying to cover all bases on this thing. And so I don't know how you just, little help defining that.
The City of Phoenix, actually, we might be able to lift what they said. And I'd read the first part, then I left off. And it said, as follows, colon, A, a fire department or police department chaplain will be invited to offer non-denominational invocation at a formal meeting on a regular basis. So we could essentially lift and put that same language in there. I think that's a very, yeah, appropriate suggestion to ensure because oftentimes it is various chaplains from, I think, the sheriff's chaplain is sort of, for lack of a better term, the default. Like, if there's nobody that's scheduled, we usually give him a call and he'll come over.
Right.
Mr. Chair, question.
Sure.
On page something, three, six, number seven, it says, the invocation shall be given prior to the start of the public meeting during the ceremonial call to order, Pledge of Allegiance. So is this leading toward before the gavel goes down? Are we doing that? Is that what you're stating here?
That is the recommendation at this point. But again, that is merely our recommendation. If the board believes that it should be part of the formal process, again, completely and unequivocally defensible, it's just how this board wants to proceed. But as proposed, yes, it would be much like we did. I believe it was the last session, yes.
But in prior meetings, we've had, you know, gavel down, then invocation, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. So this is even saying, so do the Pledge of Allegiance prior to? So this is even saying, so do the Pledge of Allegiance prior to the gavel going down? Is that what you're suggesting in this item?
Yes. That is, and again, we're attorneys, and we...
Hey, I know, worst-case scenario, I know.
Yes, we try and err on the side of caution, so we try and get as far away from that questionable line as possible. So this is by no means a mandate.
I get that. I understand, I see the for discussion purposes on here, but, but just asking the question so I understand what I'm reading. Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Sure. Well, let me, let me bring up something.
You bet. You're, you're older and wiser, and so I will let you go.
The first part, the first part's right.
And you're the chair.
I'm older. So needless to say, I've had numerous discussions with other electeds since last week's dust-up. But, and so I had a chance to interact with the mayor of Coolidge, John Thompson, Mayor Thompson. And, and he was like, well, you ought to just do like I did, Miller. I said, well, what'd you do? He says, I just eliminated it. We have no more prayer, which I thought was interesting. I said, what? And he says, yeah, he says, he says, we couldn't get pastors to come, or pastors would say they were coming and they wouldn't come, and we'd have this, these issues. So I just, he says, I just took it off the agenda. It's not on the agenda. I have copies of their agenda. They open up with the pledge, and that's it. And then they call, they call the roll. I, I think that's, that was kind of interesting because I did not know, he goes, oh, we had all those kind of problems as well, and he says, we just eliminated it. I don't, I'm not advocating that's what we do, but what my point is, it can be challenging for any of these elected bodies to navigate these waters. And so I don't know that Mayor Thompson's method was, was good, but he said, he's, he's not had one complaint since. He had one council member ask him, I noticed we don't have the prayer on there anymore. And he said, yeah, we can't get pastors over here. And the council member said, oh, okay, makes sense to me. They moved on. So I don't know if that's good, bad, or otherwise, but that, that's, you know, just down the street from us here.
So Supervisor, to that point, Chairman, I would point you to maybe the second to last page. It's actually the page that's up there, number 11. That may be one of the more, I guess I would call it controversial recommendations. And this is what happened actually two board meetings ago. Should the scheduled invocation speaker or his or her substitute not appear at the appointed time to deliver the invocation, the chairman will offer a moment of silence. Neither the chairman nor any member of the board shall deliver an invocation. That is a very cautious statement. That is our recommendation. There, if you recall, early on, I believe Supervisor Kavanaugh gave an invocation, he actually came down to the dais. If you were to modify that, our recommendation would be that if a sitting board member were to give the invocation, they not do so from their seat at that dais, that they step down and come to here to show a distinct difference.
You've got to stop it.
But I will tell you, the courts seem to be, and we're reading tea leaves, but the courts seem to not be particularly comfortable with the sitting legislators providing those prayers. So I do bring 11 to your attention simply because it's pertinent to the, what you had mentioned, but also it happened a couple of weeks ago, and that may be something that your constituents may be concerned about.
Right. More, more stuff to digest. Supervisor Goodman, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, thank you. At the beginning of your comments was, is that you're comfortable even if we continue on the way we're going? That you feel comfortable being able to defend us on any kind of civil, I mean, any kind of lawsuit that comes our direction?
Yes, I believe that, that we are constitutionally compliant now. I believe the process that our clerk currently uses to adopt the people that come forward, we are not, you know, only, let's say we only allowed Christian pastors, or we only allowed Baptist pastors, or we only allowed Catholic or LDS or any other. If that's the only people we allowed to come forward, I would have concerns. If we were denigrating people, if we were saying, you know, and all other people are going to burn in hell, and it was, you know, your sort of prototypical, old-school Baptist fire and brimstone, that would make me very concerned, I would be very concerned. But I'm at every one of these board meetings. I believe what we're doing is constitutionally sound. We're getting a little bit closer to the line, but I believe we are well within the bounds, and I would be prepared to defend this board if this board made no modifications to its current practice.
Okay. And, and one of them, if I continue, was one of the modifications that we could make is if it is to where one of us actually gives the prayer, making the, going down there and doing it.
That would make me feel a whole lot better.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that, okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? You know, it's, it's, it's difficult because as much as the, we saw the passion for the prayer, which was probably more on a, on a Christianity side, that we do, we are required, I mean, by the Constitution, to allow all citizens an opportunity and treat it fair. The playing field needs to be level for everyone. And, and so, you know, everybody drives on our roads, everybody uses our, you know, our facilities, no matter what faith or religion that they participate in, and we want them to be treated the same, I want them to be treated the same way here as well. So it's not, it's not an easy decision, I think, going forward, but I like the outline you have here. And again, I think if we can all really study it in depth and get back to you on any of our suggestions, then we'll see where it lands. If, if, is the board good with that?
I'm good with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you, members. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
I have an agenda here somewhere, and I think...
That we ran out of stuff.
We ran out of stuff to do. So we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.